How you doing?
I'm great.
Did you change the batteries out on the clock at the same day?
Can it lose its time?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Alright, I'll call to order the August 10th Planning Commission meeting if everybody will stand and join us as Commissioner Walker leads our invocation and Commissioner Davis our Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, you entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our business, our community, our residents, and our city as we come to you today, asking for your guidance, wisdom, wisdom, and support. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all the things that we do today is for the glory of you and for the service of our community. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may all be seated. Mr. Starter, will you please announce the meeting's procedures?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. We do ask that you speak clearly into the microphone so that everybody can hear. The hearing room is set up to allow for a maximum of forty people. Please respect that limit and do not add additional chairs. The lobby and outdoors are the overflow areas. The meeting is broadcast to the big screen in the lobby. Once you have spoken, we ask that you exit the room so that others can sit while they await their turn to speak. And again, I'm not sure we're at that level of capacity tonight, but anyway, when your name is called, please come to the podium. Address comments to the Planning Commission and not to the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone has signed up, has spoken. We understand that you may have strong feelings one way or another. Out of courtesy, unless it is your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outburst. This is a fact-finding hearing. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. If a previous speaker has stated the points that you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so that the hearing may proceed.
The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers will be given three minutes. We ask that you please respect the time limits. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise, will you call the roll?
Rick Rymick. Panisa Sharma.
Present.
Gloria Erickson.
Present.
Bart Stafford.
Present.
Cory Scott. Brian Gerke.
Present.
Brad Greenway. Bill Lamond.
Present.
Janice Davis.
Present.
Ladante Walker.
Here.
Bill Vow.
Present.
And me.
Oh, Carrie Hobby, apologize.
Thank you, I'm present. May I have a motion and a second to approve of last month's meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Prior to us going into the approval of tonight's agenda, I know that we do have those signed up to speak on item number two and number three, and if two commissioners choose, we can take that from a consent agenda to new business. I'll just need...
Can we allow for Robin to see if there's any additional signatures?
Oh, yes, yes.
Just real quick.
While she's doing that, if you don't mind, Chairman Hobby, I'd like to make a motion to move item three onto new business.
Thank you, Graham.
Based on the feedback that we've received.
So there is one signed up on two and then multiple on three, so...
Do we have anybody that would like to move number two?
Second.
Well, I would second his motion, but I would also ask him to amend the motion to include two and three.
Yes.
Two and three, okay.
So as we go to the approval of tonight's agenda, just to clarify, we will be moving items number two and number three to new business.
Do you want to take a vote on that now that we have a motion and a second?
I'm just, yeah. If you all approve, we will, we'll go around and take a vote on that. Ms. Wise, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Sharma.
Approve.
Laurie Erickson.
Approve.
Commissioner Stafford.
Aye.
Brian Gerke.
Aye.
Commissioner Lamond.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Vow.
Aye.
And Chairman Carrie Hobby.
Aye, thank you very much. At this point, the first matter of business is the consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda in its new format with item number one and number four?
So moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Starter, will you please present the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Item number one is LS 23-094. Property is located at approximately 120 Lura Place. It is a lot-split request to divide this property into two tracks. The applicant and property owner is Mr. Tim Winston. Again, he does seek lot-split subdivision approval to divide this unplatted parcel into two tracks. Property has a zoning classification of R3, has a future land use classification of medium-high-density residential, located in Board of Directors District Number Three. The property consists of 25.53 acres of land and is currently wooded and vacant. The property is without street frontage and is accessed by a paved driveway from the 100 block of Lura Place. The two tracks that are proposed would be divided in this way. Track one would consist of 23.53 acres. Track two would consist of two acres. Both proposed tracks meet minimum lot-size requirements for R3 residential district zoning. A common ingress/egress access easement, approximately 2,300 foot in length, is proposed to provide access to both tracks one and two. This common access easement extends from the 100 block of Lura Place to the southern boundary of track two and is currently paved with hot-mix asphalt. The recommendation on this item is to approve the Tim and Laura Winston lot-split subdivision request because the application demonstrates compliance with the requirements of Hot Springs Code, and such action will be keeping with the spirit and intent of the provisions of the zoning code. And then we move over to item number four, which is PS 23-110. This item is a preliminary subdivision plat and development plan application for a new nine-lot, single-family residential subdivision to be located on 7.3 acres of land located at 176 Shamrock Lane. Applicants Clifton and Kim Stringfellow, representing property owner Clifton Kim LLC, seek preliminary plat and development plan approval to develop this new nine-lot subdivision. It is going to be known as the Shamrock Subdivision. Property is located outside Hot Springs City limits, but within the city's adopted planning area. The property has a future land use classification of residential suburban. The findings are that the preliminary plat and development plans for the Shamrock subdivision are complete, and with the proposed conditions demonstrate compliance with both HSC, Hot Springs Code Section 16442, and 16446, and all individual elements comply. Lots comply with the minimum area and setback requirements for single-family residential lots located in the city's planning area. Both city and water sewer utilities are available in the vicinity and are to be utilized by this development. Therefore, we are recommending approval with, I think it's twelve conditions, yes, so I'm gonna go ahead and read those into the record. Condition one is all construction and construction activity is to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved preliminary plat and development plan. These conditions of approval and all applicable technical codes and specifications, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two is full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality guidelines. Number three, the planning director shall be authorized to sign the preliminary plat and development plans listing these conditions of approval, and work shall not proceed until the preliminary plat has been so executed. Item number, or condition number four is a final bill of assurance shall be submitted with the final plat application once submitted. Condition five is no permits will be issued and the sale of lots cannot occur until a final plat meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16-4-44 has been approved by the planning director and filed for record with the Garland County Circuit Clerk's Office, and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the planning office. Condition six, approval of this preliminary plat and development plan is valid until August the 10th, 2025, and prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension for up to one year. Number seven, drainage easements must be a minimum width of twenty feet. Number eight, provide drainage details for drainage easement areas. Number nine, provide stabilization method for two-to-one slopes. Number ten, provide pre- and post-drainage calculations. Number eleven is provide geotechnical report, and number twelve is to provide modified Procter curve for infill materials, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. At this time, Ms. Wise, will you take the role on the approval for the consent agenda?
Commissioner Lamond.
Approve.
Commissioner Davis.
Approve.
Commissioner Walker.
Approve.
Commissioner Vow.
Approve.
Commissioner Gerke.
Approve.
Commissioner Stafford.
Approve.
Commissioner Erickson.
Approve.
Commissioner Sharma.
Approve.
And Chairman Hobby.
Approve, thank you very much. Next item, next matter of business on tonight is the new business. So, Mr. Starter, will you please introduce the next item, item number two?
I'd be glad to. Item number two is miscellaneous case number MISC-23-108. It's an infrastructure completion bond extension request to complete the required paving of the secondary emergency access road for the cottages at Bay Shore Development. The applicant and owner, Dadson Inc., seeks twelve-month extension to complete secondary access paving for the cottages at Bay Shore Cove subdivision Phase One as required by their approved preliminary plat, final plat, and surety agreement for this development. This development is located on Clearwater Cove, off of Clearwater Court and Bay Shore Cove, north of Bay Shore Cove HPR. The subject property is located in Board of Directors Number Six and is zone PD.
Thank you very much. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second does not necessarily mean in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve item number two?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Starter, will you please present the staff report on item number two?
Yes, ma'am. I actually presented part of that just then. My apologies. I will go ahead and jump to the finding part on this request, which is the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16-4-79 for this extension are met. The request was submitted prior to the date of default of the previous letter of credit for the project, which was July 1st of 2023. The applicant provides written justification for extension. The applicant provided an irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of $27,000, which would be valid upon your approval until July 1st of 2024. So, as far as a recommendation goes, we are recommending approval of the application to extend the completion deadline for the secondary paved access into the cottages at Bay Shore Cove Development until January 1st of 2024, which again is secured by a $27,000 irrevocable letter of credit made out into the city's favor with two conditions, and those conditions are the following. Number one, provide ongoing dust and particulate mitigation until the road is improved and construction is complete to prevent dust and debris impacting the surrounding neighborhood, and number two would be compliance with all previous conditions of the subdivision approval. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you very much. At this time, will the applicant please come forward, give your name, your address, speak very clearly into the microphone, and you have five minutes to add anything else that you would like to add to the staff report findings? It appears that this time we do not have the applicant to come forward. We do have several, we do have one individual signed up to speak, so, and I'm not going to get the last name correct, so, Mr. Dwayne.
It's Dawn Sikora.
Dawn, yes, thank you very much. I highly apologize for that. If you will please come forward, name, address, speak clearly into the microphone, and you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Dawn Sikora. We live at 187 Bay Shore Cove. We obviously agree that this needs to be paved for a secondary entrance for emergencies. I do want to say there is no dust control. At this time, there never has been. The drainage down into our cul-de-sac, our curb into the condominium gate where they are accessing, the residents are accessing, that is deteriorating greatly because of the additional traffic. You cannot even put, two cars cannot be on that curb at the same time, and that's not even large SUVs, that's just two vehicles. So I just want to make that noted for the record. We do agree this needs to be a paved road, but we are concerned that nothing is going to happen to our residential street from the excess traffic that has been brought to us from this development.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, the public portion of this meeting is now closed. Commissioners, at this time, we speak amongst ourselves, or if we have any, well, we can't ask the applicant. But does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments before we go to the motion?
Well, I think the first question is, and I'm a little fuzzy, aren't there some procedural issues if the applicant is not present? Rick, can you refresh us on that? Are we allowed to go forward or not?
It's up to the commission. I mean, we do, we do recommend that every item be represented by either the applicant or an applicant representative. I was not notified that the applicant was not gonna be here. I don't think anyone in our office were, was, so I don't really know the issue why, you know, they are not in attendance, but if the commission doesn't feel comfortable making a decision without the applicant present, then you do have the ability to defer it to a future meeting, but, but I don't think you're breaking any, any procedural rules if you did decide to act on it in their absence.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to move, we table this until there's representation.
I second that.
To answer some questions.
I second that move.
Okay, so at this time, we're, we're making a motion that we're gonna table item number two to next month or when the applicant is...
And that was valid. Who was the second?
Bart Stafford.
Okay, so just to the, to the meeting in September, the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and I don't have that exact date. I could probably find it, so let me see if I can get that, and then we can just do it to a date specific.
It will be, it looks like September 12th, there'll be the second Thursday. Oh, let's try this year.
September 14th?
Yes, that's what I meant.
Okay, so there's a motion by Vow, seconded by Stafford, to defer action on this item until the Thursday, September 14th meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the motion is to table, so at this time, Ms. Wise, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Gerke.
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford.
Aye.
Commissioner Sharma.
Aye.
Commissioner Erickson.
Approve.
Commissioner Lamond.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Vow.
Aye.
And Chairman Hobby.
Yes, thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Starter, will you please introduce item number four? Sorry, number three.
Okay. Item number three is SPA-23-104. It is a large-scale development site plan application for the construction of a new restaurant known, to be known as Kaluas Mexican Restaurant in Cantina. The property address is 1442 Airport Road.
Thank you very much. Again, a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second does not mean that you are necessarily in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a, and a second to approve the item?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Starter, will you please present the staff report on item number three?
Yes, ma'am. Applicant Mr. Rico Harris with Harris Architecture, representing property owner Omar Estvez, seeks Article II Large-Scale Development Site Plan Review Approval for the construction of a Kaluas Mexican Restaurant in Cantina on the subject property. This property consists of approximately 2.66 acres of land, again, is located at 1442 Airport Road, which is the prior location of the Hogs Pizza establishment. The property is outside the city of Hot Springs City limits, but it is within the one-mile planning area jurisdiction. Property has a future land use classification of linear commercial corridor and is located in unincorporated Garland County. The subject property is located on the even side of the 1,000 block of Airport Road, and after the completed demolition of previous restaurant building, Hogs Pizza consists of an existing site improvements, including only paved drives and utilities. This project came before the Planning Commission in February of 2022 and, and was approved with conditions. However, Hot Springs Code Section 16425 Terms of Approval for Large-Scale Site Plan states, "There is an approval expiration date of one year from Planning Commission hearing to begin the project. These approvals can be extended with a written request to the planning director before the approval expiration date. The approval expired in February of 2023 without an extension request. Therefore, a new application is required." So, this request is basically a duplicate of that previous request. They are seeking approval to, to build that same restaurant on the same site. The property has one access drive from Airport Road. Development plans illustrate access to the site would be unchanged. So as far as the finding, the proposal to construct the new Kaluas Mexican Restaurant in Cantina plans are unchanged from those from February of the 2022 approval. The site plan and other materials submitted comply with the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16-4-22 and other Hot Springs Code applicable to this review, subject to compliance with the recommended conditions of approval. So, we are recommending approval of the Article II Large-Scale Development Site Plan for the Kaluas Mexican Restaurant in Cantina with the following conditions, because with these conditions are applied, the application complies with the requirements of Hot Springs Code 16-4-20. There are six conditions, and I will read those into the record. "The development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan, including but not limited to location of buildings, drives, parking, and landscaping. Number two, all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions, and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, regulations, and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the city of Hot Springs, the state of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number three, city engineering department requires sidewalk reinforcement six-inch by six-inch 10-gauge wire mesh, provide modified Procter curve for fill materials, they need to provide compact, compaction tests, and retaining walls must be filled and inspected by the design engineer, with inspection reports provided to the engineering department. Those were all under, number three. Condition number four is required permits shall be in hand for Garland County Stormwater, Garland County Flood Plane Administration, and RDOT prior to any work beginning. Number five, all exterior lighting shall be fully downcast, full cutoff fixtures, and shall contain all illumination on the subject property. And number six, just like the previous approval, multiple buildings... And number six, just like the previous approval, multiple building large-scale site plans approved by the Planning Commission shall be effective from one year from the date of approval, which would be good until August the 10th of 2024. Prior to its expiration, the Director of Planning and Development may extend the original site plan approval for up to two one-year periods upon the applicant's written request. Planning Commission approval of any project that has not fully secured all required permits within the one-year timeframe shall become null and void. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you very much. At this time, applicant can please come forward, give your name and address, speak very clearly into the microphone, and you have five minutes to add anything that was not currently set.
Thank you very much. I'm Rico Harris with Harris Architecture. My address is 1126B Malvern, and appreciate the opportunity to present again. A couple things, plans haven't changed, except we've got a little feedback from some of the surrounding community and look, some concerns about, that you'll probably hear about, about noise control and a barrier between the, the restaurant and the neighboring, the neighborhood to the, I guess that's south.
East.
And, oh, it's east, okay. So the owners agreed to make that fence that we had taller, gonna make it eight feet instead of six, as requested. And also, we're gonna plant, I'm not sure what they're called, but they're like big cedar bushes. It's like a cedar tree, except they, I've got some at my house, but I don't know what they are. But they're, they grow to 10 or 12 feet tall, and the cedar goes all the way to the ground just to help control noise and, and sight. And, and also to control sound from, from music inside the facility. We haven't designed the building yet, because this is just a, you know, a site plan approval, but we have a represent, representative rectangle that represents where the building goes. And, but our preliminary plans are to control acoustics similarly to the way you would control sound in a theater or a performing arts center. We try to contain the sound within the building. So we, I can tell you this, I know my client Omar is very interested in being a good neighbor and being cooperative, and he wants everybody to be happy and come eat and listen to music and, and enjoy his facility, and I think it will be an asset to the Hot Springs community.
Thank you.
Just a, just a quick question. You mentioned some additional criteria, the increasing the height of the fence and so forth. How, I mean, I think we probably need to get that recorded somewhere, if that's a concession that you're, that you're making, right?
I mean, I think the Planning Commissioners would want to make a, a motion and second to add additional conditions of approval, changing that fence from six to eight foot along the eastern property boundary and planting of the evergreen variety trees to help mitigate sound. I mean, some effect like that would be conditions of approval that you could consider adding.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we include as a part of the conditions, the increase in the height of the fence from six feet to eight feet, and the addition of a, a plant barrier, again, not sure what, I don't know what the bushes, but.
Evergreen.
Yeah, evergreen plant barrier to go along with that.
And that's along that eastern property boundary where they share a boundary with the condominium?
Right. Second.
Is that Val? Yes, sir. Do you want to go ahead and take a vote?
Yeah, so we'll, just to be clear, we are making a motion, and we have a second for the additional condition of raising the, the fence from six to eight feet and additional landscape greenery to help the sound barrier.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, again, a procedural thing, I might suggest that we hold off on, or maybe we can suspend this motion and, and have, hear from the other people, and I suspect there are going to be some additional motions and conditions. Maybe, maybe some procedural issues there, but.
Well, right now, we currently have a motion.
We can go ahead and vote.
And.
I mean, you could always add additional conditions.
We can add additional if needed, but right now, we already have a motion that is on the table.
I'm comfortable going forward, but I, again, I would suggest that other conditions we hold until we've heard the full story.
Before we release the applicant, do we need to vote first?
Well, as we have a motion, we do need to go ahead and vote on that, but we always can return back.
Stay right there.
So at this time, Ms. Wise, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lamont?
Approve.
Commissioner Davis?
Approved.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Val?
Aye.
Commissioner Stafford?
Aye.
Commissioner Gurke?
Aye.
Commissioner Erickson?
Approve.
Commissioner Sharma?
Aye.
And Chairman Hobbie?
Approve, yes, thank you very much. Commissioner Erickson, I know you had a question for that.
I, I do. So the proposed new building, we don't have a blueprint for the new building yet, are we just?
Well, this is, we're on a site plan, we're not.
Just, okay.
Yes, so we're not to the building just yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got some ideas that I think are gonna work great, but, yeah, not, nothing in stone yet. One of the, another issue I just remembered about, there were some questions about the hours of operation. And I don't know how that fits in with this approval process, but they're, they're pretty typical. It's 11:00 AM to 10:00 AM, Monday through, I mean, Sunday through Thursday, and Friday and Saturday, 11 to maybe 2:00 AM. But actually, it kind of depends on what the ABC determines is, I think there's been some restrictions placed on some facilities. Whatever the ABC says is what Omar, what Omar is gonna comply with, of course.
Yeah, I think that comes more along with the, the next process.
Okay.
But I, thank you for letting us know.
Sure.
Yeah, regulating hours of operation is beyond the authority of the Planning Commission.
Yeah. Oh, the noise ordinance, well, that would fall under county, right?
Right, and there is a county noise ordinance, I verified that today, and it, it does regulate certain noises of, you know, of certain degree between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And so if there's, if there are issues, you know, a call to the Sheriff's Department would be the appropriate action, you know, to take. So there are provisions in county code that, that can't address excessive noise.
So are you saying we, be, not be appropriate for us to make any noise conditions, like we, similar to say what we do with lighting, be contained within the bounds of the building? Or is that appropriate or not appropriate for?
Well, as far as noise, what we can do is apply the, the fencing, apply the landscaping barrier.
Right.
But as for hours of operation, that's not our, under our authority.
Right, okay, so that'll, we'll come back to that.
Yeah.
You, you can add site conditions that could help mitigate, like raising the fence or adding a vegetative buffer, you know, things like that to help mitigate an impact. But, but as far as regulating their hours of operation, or, you know, that's, now there are other, there may be other agencies, such as the Alcohol Beverage Control, that, that may can do that through an alcohol permit.
Yes.
But it's, it's not within our authority to do that.
Are there any intentions of having outdoor dining and/or entertainment music?
No, sir, it's, that was, I was just about to say that, is that the, the intent is to keep the, or the plan is to keep all the music inside anyway, and, and to control the, the sound within that using acoustical treatments, similar to what you would see in a theater, absorptive materials on the walls, strategically arranging the, the band or the speakers, wherever the case may be, so that the sound is directed back into the building and into the side of the hill. It's gonna be a, kind of like a walkout basement type situation, because it's on a hill. And, yeah, he wants to keep it all inside. And just also, you know, for the record too, the, the types of events that Omar's planning to, to kind of market to, I guess, or wedding receptions, rehearsal dinners, family reunions, that things, kind of like an event center.
Okay. Well, very good. Any other questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair, just one question.
Yes.
I know you, you just stated that you're still in design mode.
Yes, sir.
If, if, if it, if it is two levels, will both levels be accessible?
They were, they will, absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good question.
Thank you very much.
Okay, okay, thank you.
At this time, we do have several signed up to speak, so I'll find my piece of paper. And we'll, we'll go just from who has signed up first and, and on through the list. So we have Mark Ak, At?
Alt.
Alt, okay, sorry. Mr. Mark, please come on up, you have three minutes, speak, speak very clearly into the microphone, and address us, let us know your name and your address.
My name's Mark Alt. I live at 1412 Airport Boulevard, Unit B9, the condo is next door to the proposed site. I was almost late getting out here. I can show you the traffic on the phone, I'll take the pictures out. The traffic was over the bridge coming out of airport. It was way past Walmart on the other side. This will end 20,000 square foot. The only thing I could find in the city that has been gone before y'all lately is the convention center at Oakland, which is in a commercial area and has sufficient parking. I don't mind having a restaurant there, like when, I was living there when Hogs was there, and it had 10, 10 o'clock noise curfew. That was in agreement with the Garland County Sheriff, and that's what fashioned Bubba Brews, where they're closed, they have to turn off the music at 10 o'clock. Music carries a long way on water, I don't know if y'all know that, but it does. The residential homes are surrounding this property, and it's far more dense residential there than across the street, where John Gibson has a lot lower ratio. So, and the other thing is, I looked at the site plans. Mr. Estvez bragged to the newspaper, I got the article, that they were gonna have a huge deck out there, and they're also gonna have delivery for Mexican food via ski-doo's and stuff like that. And they're gonna have all kinds of, he wants to dredge that out and change the inlet coming in. So I mean, there are a lot of good plans, I guess, but that all affects where I live detrimentally, and it affects all the stakeholders, residents around that whole area. So I, if it's something smaller, a reasonable-sized restaurant, I could support it. But the, something 20,000 square foot, I, I just, and probably another 10,000 square foot deck, that's, that's crazy. So that's probably my three minutes, but I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our list, we have Ms. Debbie. You're gonna have to help me with your last name as well. Okay, I didn't know if that was an L or not. Thank you, ma'am. Say your name and your address, please, you have three minutes.
I'm Debbie Florrie, and I live at 1412 Airport Road, A14. So my balcony, I'm upstairs, so my balcony is right by this property. When I am on my patio, I can see over the fence, and I can see all of that, because I've watched trash be dumped there and all these things. Now, like I said, like Mark said, we're all for a restaurant of, of reasonable size, and noise level, I mean, I can't imagine even an eight-foot fence, I think I could probably see over that. And so we're concerned with all of that. I can't imagine, you know, weddings and reunions and things getting out of hand. And, yeah, the traffic will be a problem, and, you know, we're worried about the boats, our boat docks are right there, that cove is not huge, so we're not sure how many boats are coming in and out of there, that's gonna affect us also. And, yeah, so right now, we've got, you know, a lot of problems with the fence that's there now, it's, I think it's our fence, but all the trees and things that are there, so the property right now isn't even being maintained. And unfortunately, the wind we have over the weekend dumped a dead tree that's on that property onto my car, and now my car is damaged, probably six, $7,000 worth of damage. So we need to maintain that property before it's even built, it needs to be maintained. So that's my serious concerns. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Mark Dickerson.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
I heard some of my answers already, thank you.
Yes, sir. Walter Gold?
Good evening, my name is Walter Gold, I live at 1412 Airport Road, I'm in condo, Unit A12. My two main concerns are noise pollution and light pollution. Lights from the parking lot, lights for the restaurants, and also the vehicles as they come and go in and out of them. The parking lot will be shining on our condos, and my other concern is noise pollution from the vehicles and any outside activities at the restaurant. My suggestion would be a line of plants along the fence line to help absorb some of that, and I won't be able to absorb all of it, but at least be able to absorb some of it. Talked about increasing the fence height from six feet to eight feet, that's gonna do some, but the units up on top is mine and Debbie's are, it won't do anything for them because they'll be coming over that eight-foot fence. There's a line of trees there now, but they're mainly scrub trees. I don't know if they're planning on taking them out, I couldn't really see from the, the site plan that was up on the, the screen just a minute ago, but it didn't look like they were planning on leaving any of the existing trees there, which I can understand, it is just scrub trees. But like I say, my main two concerns are the light pollution and the noise pollution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Murphy?
Hi, I'm Lisa Murphy, I'm at 220 North Dana Drive, I'm not in the condos, I'm across the cove. And so my concerns are similar, but in, in the fact that the owner did talk to the newspaper and say that there was going to be boat delivery of food, if you're familiar with that cove or if you're not, it's in Paradise Cove, but it's in the far-left cove. And all of us across, we're all year-round residents. There's one gentleman who's there probably nine months, and we've all been there for a long time, but, so we were there when Hogs was there. And they used to try to double park boats there on their boardwalk, they don't actually have a dock, they have a boardwalk, right? And they used to have outside music on the deck, which the new owner also said he was gonna do in the article. If it doesn't happen, great, I mean, I'm fine, I'm good with a restaurant, I'm good with all of that, I'm good with beautifying the area, coming into my neighborhood, not upset about that. My concern is if you mess with my sleep and you mess with my boating in the summer, those are two things I really love, okay? And if I can't pull my boat out, which I am not able to, if there's one boat lined up against the boardwalk, I can, I can get a boat out, okay? Some people may not be able to, I can get one out. But if they double park, we won't be able to. Now, what Entergy did before with Hogs was they came out, and right now, there are brand-new signs out there that say, "Do not double park." And I don't know if Entergy made them put those out there, or they just decided to when there's not even a building, but either way, Entergy came out and told Hogs, "Look, if you don't manage your boat parking, we will take away your boardwalk permit." So you won't even have a boardwalk. And so we know we can go through Entergy for that kind of stuff, but also when Hogs was there with the noise ordinance, which any place that wants to be open at 2:00 AM, what was the last place we had on the lake, Smiley's? You know, that didn't end really well. Wasn't a hater against Smiley's, but it wasn't real quiet. If you want to be open serving alcohol until 2:00 AM, which, that's an ABC issue, we can go to ABC about that, I understand how that works, but I just, I, we can say it's all just gonna be a nice restaurant or whatever, but I think there's some other intentions there on the late-night stuff. Nothing good happens after midnight, in my opinion, but, but yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about mainly, I, they can't put a barrier up to where they won't be shining lights in my bedroom, I'll figure that out, I'm just concerned with the dock stuff. And the size, 20,000 square foot and 168 parking spots is pretty big, I'm trying to like picture it, I don't know, maybe Fisherman's Wharf has that big a parking, they don't do music and they're not open until 2:00 AM, but they're, and they're in a more commercial area, but they're definitely more quiet. I'm just trying to picture all the vehicles coming in and out of there and like egress and ingress, and how much space there is coming off Airport Road and turning and stuff. I, I'm sure that's what you guys do, you look at like the traffic count and stuff and figure out whether that's a really smart idea. But if it works and you think it's good, then so be it. It's just, it's just really big. And I think the long-term plan, this is just an opinion, obviously, but you want liquor till two AM. You want to tell the town that you're going to have people pulling up to, to pick up food, and you're going to have parties outside and all that stuff. I think the long-term plan, you know, is for them to have a cool party place. And cool party places on the lake were really fun in like the nineties. It's, I think it's become a lot more family oriented now, and you have a lot more homes than you had in the nineties, you know? And we have a really quiet cove right now. But we were, on Hogs, we would just call the sheriff at ten o'clock. They'd go out there and shut them down. So, I mean, I hate to use their time that way, but it is what it is. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would the applicant at this time like to address the, the concerns that some of the citizens have? And it's primarily based on, as far as what I've heard, a lot about the noise.
Yeah, yeah. Do y'all have any questions? Do you want to direct any questions based on the? I guess what I would say initially again is that, well, let me say this. I haven't said this yet. I've said this to other people before. I think Omar's going to be a better, a better neighbor than Hogs Pizza was. And he's not planning on having music outside. I don't know what, maybe that was a plan early on or a year ago. I don't know. That's not the plan now. And the plan is to keep all the music inside. And because of some of the feedback we got, you know, at the last planning commission meeting, we, and also what I say is, you know, we haven't designed the building yet. When we do design it, I mean, hopefully, it'll be a very, you know, attractive. It'd be a beautiful building. And so, if people can see it from up high, you know, or see the facility, hopefully, it'll be, it'll be a pleasant view as opposed to, you know, unpleasant. Oh, the size of the building. So, what we did was, and we do this on almost every submittal for a, for planning commission approval, is, is we try to see what the maximum is that you could do on a piece of property. We try to maximize the, the value of the development on that piece of property. And that's what that twenty thousand feet and a hundred and sixty-eight car, that is the absolute most building and most parking spaces and most landscaping that we could get on that piece of property. It's probably not going to be that big. In fact, I would say definitely it's not going to be that big because twenty thousand square foot building in today's building climate represents about four and a half to five million dollars worth of building. How's that sound? Anyway, so, do y'all have any questions?
I do. I know when Crystal Ridge was being built, they were pushed back by ABC for them to not just have a restaurant, but to have an event space. They were mandated to have an event space for their liquor license. And it had to be a certain square footage. So, I'm sure as the building comes down the way, ABC is going to be chiming in on what they're going to be requiring in order to get this permit.
We've heard some conflict about outdoor dining. Are you going to have outdoor dining or not?
Yeah, is that, I didn't have a deck in my plan, but what? Okay, which I think, I mean, if you're on the lake, that's, you got to have that.
Well, what about the delivery?
Yeah, what is, you want to talk about that?
Well, that, that again is only, that's not, that's not.
I guess that's an Entergy question. Yeah, and I haven't talked to Entergy at all about this project yet because we don't have any plans yet for down by the lake. But I, I think what I, what I heard just now is it, it sounds like Omar is, has been expressing a desire to kind of improve that cove, to make it better. Maybe add, add some lake from his property, you know what I mean, cut it back so that there's more water, a little more room there for boats to come in and out, which is probably a good thing.
And commissioners?
Would like to ask, Mr. Harris, have you or Mr. Estvez, I believe it is, had a actual sit down with the community, members of the community to date?
We, I, I've had some phone calls with, really just found out, I think, day before yesterday that there was, you know, some folks that had some concerns about it. I just found out about them, but yeah.
Okay. Again, I don't, if that's anything we specifically regulate, but it just seems like, as you've said, a good neighbor would follow up on those sorts of things.
Yeah, I agree.
The, and can you confirm from what we were looking at in our, in our materials, was that footage ten thousand square feet or twenty thousand square feet?
It's shown as a twenty thousand foot.
Dimensionally, because I didn't try to measure it or anything.
Yeah. But like, like you said, that typically, you know, a, a building size could be shrunk from, from an approval. That's a, you know, that, that's a positive move. What, what couldn't happen is they couldn't come in, you know, in six months and say, "Hey, we've drawn the building to thirty thousand square feet." That would require another trip to planning commission. So, again, it's up to the applicant, assuming they get approval for a twenty thousand square foot building. They could build that building of that size in that location, or, or they could build smaller.
Okay. I have questions about the land use and the, and the future land use plan, which is to refresh everyone this linear commercial corridor. Now, I know we're not applying zoning per se here, but I would like you to refresh for us what typical types of uses are compatible with that, and also address the issue of, I believe our material stated that the restaurant area was ten thousand, and then there's a bar, but it wasn't specific beyond that about use of space. And so, I think there's some, some issue here in determining compatibility of use with the future land use plan in terms of, if it were in the city, we would categorize a restaurant differently from a bar. Or they're, they're, if you look at the zoning table, there are differences in permitted and, and conditional use requirements for those types of uses that restaurants sit down and take out is totally different from bars, taverns, lounges. Totally is different from nightclubs, dance halls, and it's different from theaters. So, I think we get into some issues about usage. And so, to me, there's a considerable difference in terms of, of what is really, what is, what do we believe is compatible
And I agree with everything that you're asking, but at this point, do you have any more questions for the applicant? Because that, these, to me, are more that we talk amongst ourselves, and that's a discussion point that the commissioners have.
Okay, you want to close off questions to him first?
Well, I'm just asking if you have any direct questions for the applicant.
Let me, let me check.
Have you met with ABC or have you applied for a license yet?
No, sir, not yet. I don't think so. No, sir, not yet.
I have no other questions for the applicant.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. At this time, we'll close the public portion of the, of the application. And this is where we can talk about things that, that you were of concern of.
Yeah, I would think maybe, Rick, if you can maybe start to address that and see what that leads to.
So, I mean, I guess the first thing I would say is this isn't inside the city limits of Hot Springs. It's unzoned. And we really don't have land use authority on the property. Secondly, the linear commercial corridor, future land use classification is typically found along major thoroughfares of your city, arterials, highways. And it represents probably the most intense commercial development in, if we're talking inside city limits. I think your other question was about a restaurant versus a liquor store or a bar or a tavern. When you have a, when you have a restaurant that also sells alcohol as an accessory use to it, and you might have a dance floor or whatever, those are still typically all considered restaurant use, but with accessory uses that are associated therewith. So, we don't, we don't look at a, a restaurant that also serves alcohol as being, you know, an alcohol package sales, for example, or, or even a bar, lounge, or tavern. I mean, if you're a bar, lounge, or tavern where I'm assuming the majority of your sales come from liquor, and then you happen to also sell, you know, hamburgers, then, then maybe you would be considered a bar, lounge, or tavern that had an accessory use as a restaurant. But in this case, I think it would clearly be a restaurant that happened to also sell alcoholic beverages, and that would typically just be considered an accessory to a restaurant use.
Okay. And the size of the building or scale really has nothing, nothing to do with that. And that, again, I just want us to all understand the types of uses that could, that we don't have any control on after we vote here. And it is, it is a highly intense, has a, has a high, I guess you would say, highly intense and highly, high density type of use. The, the, I also would, well, I'm not going to cover parking. But I also would like to point out for our consideration that, that again, basically whatever is built and put into place there, then should it ever become annexed or subject to zoning, would be grandfathered. And so, what we're, those things that we can do, we can do now, recognizing what we, what we're able to do.
I might add one other thing. C four zoning, I would say probably most prominently corresponds with linear commercial corridor inside city limits. And C four zoning is our regional commercial or slash open display district. That is our most intense commercial development. It allows you to do a multitude of commercial activities as permitted uses. It allows you to do, I think I'm recalling this correctly, a seventy percent floor area ratio, building to land ratio, which this would comply with easily on the size property that it is. So, if it were in the city and if it was on C four, I believe the plan as submitted would meet the C four zone district requirements for building size, building location, parking, et cetera.
And, and I can confirm that all of those uses, I didn't, I didn't raise question of a liquor store, but in terms of, in terms of bars and lounges and nightclubs, all of those are permitted uses. I mean, just, again, not that it's an issue we're going to vote on per se, but just as far as our understanding, the long-term compatibility with our long-term plan.
Yes.
And the, I'll defer to any other commissioners' questions for now.
No, those are great, great questions, comments, concerns. Very well stated. Commissioners, any other?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, I have a motion, some motions.
Well, that'll come with when we go to the vote. So, just to clarify, we are voting to approve with staff findings and recommendations with the addition of the six foot fence going to eight foot fence and additional landscaping to help with the noise buffering. So, that is our motion to approve that. So, at this point.
I, I have another motion similar to for other conditions.
Other conditions as in?
We, we approved two conditions, two additional conditions. I would like to add a couple more additional conditions.
Then that'll have to be an additional motion. So, we'll have to start that process again.
So, I'm ready to move if the chair, if the chair.
Your motion is to?
That we speci, and I don't think this was in the other conditions, but that we specifically, as we typically do, that require any outdoor lighting be contained within the premises of the property.
That is, that's in the, that's in the recommendations.
It's in there.
And then, as far as noise, we, can we?
That's regulated by?
Can we contain that in a similar way to lighting or not? Because of what you've said before, that's not.
I mean, to my knowledge, we don't have, we don't have that authority. We can.
The county has a noise.
And we, we can, we can regulate site improvements to help try to mitigate, which is what we've already done. We've increased the height of a fence. We are installing evergreen variety trees along the eastern boundary to try to help mitigate those things. So, I think that's where the authority ends. I don't know that we could really.
Okay. I frequently travel Airport Road at a lot of different times of the day. I am fully aware of the traffic issues there. And in particular, that Bubba's has a no left turn. Was that no left turn requirement done by, controlled by?
The city engineering department.
It's a state road, city or state?
That was in the city. So, we have regulation over driveways and driveway configurations. And due to its proximity of people crossing the bridge, and then the driveway just being right there kind of on you, I think the decision was made that that was an unsafe situation due to those factors. And they were basically regulated to be a right turn in and a right turn out.
So, that's in outside of this commission's control that?
It comes from the city.
Safety of that would fall to the.
The city engineering department. So, they're, for their driveway plan, that has to go through the city engineering to, for, to get that proper permit.
Yeah, and this was reviewed by, by the same department.
I didn't remember anything in, in the comments at this point, but I would refer that to staff follow up. I have no other questions, no other, and no motions.
No, okay. So, again, just to make sure that we're all clear, the motion is to approve. Item number three was staff findings and recommendations with the addition of two conditions. An eight foot fence and additional evergreen landscaping. I don't know how to word that, but Rick, I know you do.
Yeah, and it's, and it's on the eastern side of the property where the property has a common boundary with the condominium regime. So, I just wanted to clarify where these things needed to occur.
Perfect. Thank you. So, the motion is to approve. So, at this time, Ms. Wise, will you please draw the roll?
Commissioner Walker?
Approve.
Commissioner Davis?
Approve.
Commissioner Lamont?
Approve.
Commissioner Vow?
Approve.
Commissioner Stafford?
Approve.
Commissioner Gerke?
Approve.
Commissioner Sharma?
Approve.
Commissioner Erickson?
Approve.
Chairman Habe?
Approve. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the director's report.
Yes, ma'am. Two things to report on. The Code Forward project is proceeding with an anticipated date for the first draft of the new code due to us in October. It may actually get here just slightly sooner than that, but that's kind of the date that we're anticipating. I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to visit the project website, but we encourage you to do that. If you want to write this down, if you don't know it already, it's www.CodeForwardHS.com. There has been new and fresh content just recently added, including a four-minute project outline video and the addition of a survey you can click on and, and take that survey. That's very helpful, you know, to receive feedback. And we, we have been getting some, some responses to that, to that survey. So, do encourage you to take a look at the website and maybe check out that video and even take the survey. You know, if you want to take the survey, we encourage you to do that. The other thing is the housing strategy. The consulting is, consultant is finishing up that final report in deliverables on that project with an anticipated completion date of a month to six weeks. So, so that project is getting very close to completing. The consultant made another presentation to the board a couple of weeks ago, as I recall. I know they had some information provided to them for their retreat that they had just last week. So, again, that, that should be finishing up probably within the next four to six weeks. And that concludes the items on the director's report.
Outstanding. Lot of exciting things happening. I'm really excited about the housing strategy myself. With no further business, I do call for a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting.
Can I?
Yes.
Just ask a quick question from an overall planning perspective. I was, I was really bored today, so I went in and started looking at all the, the master plan that had been done in 2020. And I noticed there's an action plan in there. And I, I was thinking that, you know, that this may have already been done, Rick, so, so I, I, I don't know. But would it be a good idea for either the, the commission or the planning department to go to the, the board of directors and say, "This is our action plan, and these are the specific things that we have approved or done as a part of the planning process in Hot Springs that, that are moving this forward toward what we said." Just as a way of saying, you know, not losing the vision of where we're.
Yeah. And we, we do track that. And, and this board is, our current board has been very good about not letting a plan set on a shelf, you know, spending money and then never acting upon it because it is constantly being referred to. The housing strategy plan is a component of, of something to do. Adopting new development regulations is what we're in the middle of doing. That was another component. So, so things are happening.
I just want to make sure that. I just want to make sure that the planning department is getting credit for the good work that, that you guys are doing
Yeah.
that is supporting that plan.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. I'm sure Kathy would say the same, as well as the other people in the department. We work hard and we, we try to do a good job, and, and that's a, that's a, a big plan, and there's lots of steps and components to it, but you've got to start somewhere, and we are implementing or initiating projects to try and start implementing it, so.
Okay. Just appreciate it.
I'm glad that you did say that, but I, I mean, I've even had, heard things of very positive reflection of the planning commission throughout the community, so, and I, and it takes some time, but we're, we're checking those boxes off, and, and we're definitely going forward, and we really commend your team for, for making a lot of that happen.
Well, thank you.
No further business?
We adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great meeting, guys. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Tremendous right here.